Good evening. It is six o'clock on August 17th. We're calling the River Town Council meeting to order. I will ask the town clerk to call, do roll call, please.
Vice Mayor John Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Kristen Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Michelle Cordes.
Here.
Councilmember Judy Hughes.
Here.
Mayor Walter is running late but doesn't tend to be here tonight, but she's asked Vice Mayor Anderson to run the meeting for her this evening.
Thank you. We'll have a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next item is our call to the public. The call to the public. I'm getting a little feedback. The call to the public for public comments on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council rules limit public comments to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review the matter raised, and may ask the matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter at the open call to the public unless the matter is properly noticed for discussion for legal actions. Do we have anyone who wants to comment at this time?
So far tonight, Vice Mayor Anderson, no one has contacted me. I do see that we do have 12 attendees with us tonight. I do not see any hands raised for anyone wanting to speak. If you do want to speak at call to the public, please raise your hand.
Eleven people.
We now have 13 people. So I do not see any hands raised tonight, Vice Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Well, next on the list is our presentation. One. So the first presentation, I'm going to turn the presentations over to Roger Beatty because he has two guests as well, I guess, participate in the presentations tonight. Roger.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Anderson and council. Thank you for having me this evening. My name is Roger Beatty and I am the executive director of the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce. And greetings to everybody that is online tonight. One of the big things that we have in Florence to, as a tourist attraction that I think we're all familiar with, hopefully we're all familiar with and very, very proud of, is the Casa Grande ruins. And I know that it's right next to Coolidge, but being a close 10 miles away from Florence, I feel it's part of our tourism draw also. We have many people that visit the ruins and then come to Florence and seal all of our sites. For that reason, I invited, and I'd like to introduce to everybody, the brand new superintendent, a new resident to Arizona. I'll let him tell you a little bit more about himself. But it is my pleasure to introduce to you, to the council and to the town of Florence, Mr. Ben Littlefield, who is the new superintendent of the Casa Grande ruins.
Thank you, Roger, and thank you, council members, for having me tonight. I'm Ben Littlefield, new superintendent with the National Park Service. It's my first posting as a superintendent. And first time I've lived in Arizona, I've visited a few times. But yeah, so I wanted to share with you some recent highlights for us and also kind of give an update on what our operating status is right now and with an eye for the future as well. So a little bit about my background, I have kind of a varied background. I studied wildlife management in college, worked in wildlife with carnivores and owls for a number of years before getting into law enforcement in the park service, and I did that for about five years. I worked as a facility manager, safety manager. Most recently, at Redwood National Park, I was the chief of planning and project management. And my little family and I arrived in Arizona in December of 2019. And shortly thereafter, we had the coronavirus thing hit and other challenges. But it's been, it's been a really exciting time for me and I'm excited to do some interesting things with our local communities as well as our friends group, which Roger is the newly appointed vice president of our friends group, so we're proud to have him for that. But yeah, a few things I wanted to highlight for you. We've been, we've been open to the public after shutting down for a period of time since the first of June. And we're seeing about, about on par with what we expect to have for visitation for this time of year. It's our slow season, as I'm sure you're aware. In March of 2019, we eliminated our fee program. And during the last winter months, we saw a pretty good increase in the visitation that we were getting at the unit. So that's kind of some exciting news that you guys might be interested in. Along the lines of our friends group, we were excited that our friends group is sponsoring not only a pollinator garden they've been working on the design for for some time, but they've recently procured some distance learning equipment for us to be able to reach out to schools in these strange times we're in remotely, which will give us the ability to reach classrooms that aren't able to travel to the unit, but also expand, expand what we're able to do with the small staff. The other, the other thing that I, that I wanted to point out is there's some, there's pretty strong bipartisan support in both houses of Congress for an expansion of our unit boundary, which includes, which includes a parcel of land that is within the city of Florence. So I really think of both Coolidge and Florence as our main partnering communities, you know, moving forward. And I just wanted to share that it looks like there's some real potential with that proposed legislation. And I look forward to partnering with Florence in the future. And thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Littlefield. Roger, who's your next guest tonight?
Thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor. One thing that Ben started to go in and out again, he has internet in San Tan Valley, not Florence, internet issues, but in San Tan Valley. And one of the things I would like to point out, and I don't have the exact numbers, and I don't know if Ben is still on, but the financial windfall that the, that the ruins bring to the area, not only to Coolidge, but to all of, all of Pinale County. I'll get you that, those numbers, I don't have them in front of me. I was going to put Ben on the spot, but he, he stepped away. So if you don't mind, I'd like to move on to the second thing. And this is more for me or from me and my role as the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce. One of the duties of my job is to look to bring customers and attention to our businesses of the town of Florence. And looking at many creative ways, talking about how wonderful, you know, some of the businesses are and things. But one thing I came across and have shared with a couple of you already is something that Mesa is doing. Mesa, Arizona, just north of us, has become the first autism-certified city, town in all of the world. And you might think, you know, what does that mean? Why is that important? For those that don't know, one in six people have a sensory disorder right now. Millions of adults are on the spectrum of autism and have not been diagnosed. Or maybe they're just finding about it now because we're still finding a lot about it, finding out. And right now, they're saying that one in 54 children are being formally diagnosed with many more probably going undiagnosed till later on in the year. Now, for many families, that means sometimes a tough life. Going to restaurants with loud noises, with things that kind of mess with your sensory is not a welcome sight. So often, they don't go to restaurants, they don't go to stores, they don't participate in, in basic activities that we all, that we all can think of that are just normal for us. So the tourism director of Mesa has a child that is on the spectrum. And he was in San Diego and had the worst vacation. He went to the restaurant, his son got upset. They went somewhere else, something happened, and his son got upset. And he started thinking, well, what if we educated the town, the businesses, the city on how to interact, how to identify, and maybe even how to work with? I will let Amy Kennett with me tonight to talk a little bit about that. So I'll let, I'll let her talk about that part of it. But so we met with the mayor and, and the gentleman from Visit Mesa and talked a little bit about the program. And basically is what it sounds, a certification. What I'm suggesting here is the town have a work session to talk about perhaps working towards a certification that our town, the town of Florence, becomes certified in autism, to recognize that and to advertise to everybody that we're here, that we're, that we care, that it's a great place to live, raise your kids, and that, you know, and if you just happen to be in the spectrum, it is even more welcoming. So what does that mean? It means that we, that front-facing or client-facing employees go through a certification. Some of the, some of them, if it's just small, a small interaction, it's a small three, four-hour class. Something like healthcare or teachers, it's a little bit more in-depth and something we can talk about later. But going through and getting the buy-in from the healthcare industry, getting the buy-in from the schools, getting in by, by in by the businesses and from the town, the town, the parks and rec, and I know that's not the right term, I always still say that, but identifying those needs and identifying those employees and getting them the training. It also means having signs up at the pool, at the library, warning, this may produce loud sounds, this may affect this sensory, or something, you know, items that will identify people or identify potential issues for children or adults with these sensory issues. I gave you a whole bunch of information in the packet. I hope you had a chance to look at it. I do have a presentation which I, I could share if we'd like, but basically it gives you that information that I kind of shared. There is over a 600% increase in autism diagnosis in the United States. There are amazing, amazing areas of identification and treatment, but it is still something that we should be dealing with in our daily lives and accepting and working with. So a program like this would not only be attractive to families with, with sensory-issued children, that's not the right term, but, but it would also hopefully be, be a place that we could employ adults and hopefully teenagers with these, with these issues. And I'm going to actually reach out to Amy right now. I think she's under, under mute and just give a little bit of an idea of what that would mean to a family, if you don't mind.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Amy Kennett and I wanted to talk a little bit about the benefits that I see of having Florence become a certified autism city. I'm a mother of four and two of my adult children have special needs. I know firsthand how much this could help the community, the businesses, the people of Florence, and especially our special needs population. I've worked within the Florence School District as an educator for two years, but before that, my life, for the most part, has been taking care of individuals with special needs, including my own children. From my own experience over the years, raising my now adult children who are uniquely designed, the areas that would have been greatly impacted by being a certified autism city are, one area, schools. We've had some amazing teachers over the years, but occasionally we got a teacher or staff member that just did not understand autism, or my son, Thomas. Having the training would have made all the difference for the teacher and for my son. Instead of my son curling up in a ball due to the loud alarm or the lights, they would have known and understood how to help in that moment and a better outcome would have happened. Jobs were, is definitely, it's a constant struggle. We're trying to help my kids find jobs. My son is now 23 and autistic. My daughter, Abigail, is 21 and she has cerebral palsy. Many don't see that they are just as capable as you and I to work. And they want to work. They just need to be given the same opportunities as all of us. For this reason, I've helped my two adult children with special needs start a business that is owned and operated by them and also other adults living with disabilities. They want to give back, they want to make a difference and help others with disabilities, have opportunities and show the community that they can be employees, business owners, and make a difference. Having Florence become a certified autism city is huge. It would help transportation. Many of the adults in the special needs community, they don't drive. And this would impact the community greatly. They are hardworking individuals and trust me, they love to spend the money that they've worked hard to earn. Having businesses and business owners and employees become autism-certified would bring them into the shops, the restaurants, the library, the theaters, a whole lot more, knowing that they are going to be treated with respect and kindness. They're going to come back again and again and again, knowing that they are safe and treated just like everybody else. Specialty housing, this is a huge need in our area. They want to live independently but within a safe community. I've been working for quite some time on making this happen and we're very close. Being a certified autism city would help this tremendously. There's many areas, being a mother of two kids and my whole life working with individuals with special needs, this would be amazing for our community, for businesses, for schools, all across the board. And I also have letters from other people that live and work within the community. I don't know if I'm able to read those right now on time, but there are grandmothers, mothers, teachers that have lived for years within the city of Florence that would love to hear, have you guys hear their voice as well. Can I read one of those?
Yeah, you can, you can read one, but if you would like to give copies to our town clerk, she can post them on our website.
I can do that as well, I can send them.
Go ahead and read one.
Okay, this one is from Shayna Smith. She's been an educator in the city of Florence for about 20 years. Dear town of Florence, it has come to my attention that the town of Florence has the opportunity to become a certified autism city. What a wonderful chance for the town of Florence to show their commitment to serve individuals with autism and other cognitive disorders in the community. Over the last 20 years, I have worked in education as both a general and special education teacher. Through these years, I have shown inclusive, I'm sorry, I've seen how inclusive and accessible environments help individuals with autism shine. I have coached unified sports at Florence High School, where inclusion is promoted and celebrated. I wish everyone could share the joy in seeing both athletes with and without disabilities compete together on the field. The friendships built by participating in unified sports last a lifetime. I believe if Florence becomes a certified autism city, there'd be more opportunities for adults and students with and without disabilities to build those friendships and create a truly inclusive and accessible town. Florence has been great to me and my family. Whenever I tell people about life in Florence, I say Florence is family. I want that to be true for all members of Florence, including those who live in Florence with autism and other cognitive disorders. What better way to help them feel like true family than becoming certified autism city? According to the International Board of Credentially and Continuing Education, IBCCES standards, becoming an autism-certified city benefits for the town include: increased tourism, improved quality of life for all residents, attract skilled talent to local companies, increase community engagement, create a district-inclusive brand nationally and internationally, increase quality of education resources, improve healthcare experience and outcomes, increase workforce readiness, create opportunity for funding and grants and increase revenue. With all these benefits and more, please consider completing the process to make the town of Florence an autism-certified city. Thank you for your time, Shayna Smith.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
So just, just a little bit more. Like I said, I would love to sit and, and discuss the particulars about this on a work session. I know this is not the proper format for that. We can talk money, how much it would cost, and kind of the plans moving forward on rolling it out. There, there is a connection between the businesses, between the healthcare schools and the, and the government that we would love to talk to. But one thing that kind of is important that, looking at Mesa and looking at many of these other businesses, large businesses, hotel chains that have done this certification program, they have noticed it is, it is measurable, increase in profitability, increase in employee morale, increase in grants. I know that when we first did this, we had a, the mayor had a talk with the mayor of Mesa. And if she were here, she would, she's already found some grants that would be available. So yes, this is going to cost a little bit of money on the front end, but it returns quite a bit more on investment, ROI at the end. So like I said, I would love a chance to, to, to have a work session on this, to continue to discuss delve into what exactly it would take. It is different for every business on how much certification hours are needed and it would take, but it is, looks, it really, really would be something that would be a great thing for the town. It would bring great publicity and with all the families moving here, it would affect so many people. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, just so you know, council, councilmember Cordes does have her hand raised in the background of the participant log.
Okay, Councilman Cordes.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say there is no better advocate than Amy Kennett for this topic. I've had the pleasure of knowing her kids and they are fabulous. And if you had ever been in the fudge shop while Abigail was in high school, you met her because she worked there. That is one of the benefits that the fudge shop offers our students at Florence High School is if they are uniquely intellectually designed, they get to work in her shop and help out with customers and they learn all kinds of life skills. And every person that met her absolutely adored her. So Amy is the best advocate for us. I love this idea. I know I have talked to staff before about us trying to find a partnership with the business that we could help the school district have a place that they knew these kids could get job training at. And so we looked at it, we haven't been able to do a whole lot with it because there are a lot of challenges. But hopefully something like this would be able to help us achieve that goal as well. And it could be any kind of business. So, you know, once we get further down the line, maybe we'll be able to have a great partnership with some business owners and help create that along with the school district. I'm just excited and wanted to say welcome, Ms. Kennett, and thank you for your word.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, our regular scheduled work session that we do not have a work session at would be September 14th.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that Councilman Wall work with you and Roger. There may be some other items that we should have on that with the council, with the chamber, rather, excuse me. But I know the chamber has a lot of things on their, their agenda right, right now, and the town's involved in a couple of those. So it might be a good opportunity to, just to have a work session, a general work session with several items. What do you think, Karen? You're muted. We can't hear you, you're muted, Karen.
I thought if I held my spacebar down, I would be unmuted, but apparently not. I apologize. First of all, I think this is a wonderful opportunity. I have some personal experience with individuals with autism, a wide range of placements on the spectrum. And I know how important it is for families with children and adults with autism to have the ability to participate both socially, intellectually, and educationally in the public space. So I'd be more than supportive of this effort and anything that I can do to work with Roger and any others, Amy, who have an interest in this. I know that it's a big project because when you look at the, the school district, the healthcare industry and the businesses in town, there's a lot of education that would have to take place. But I think it would be well worth it. And certainly, as Roger mentioned, it would be a measurable benefit to all of us. So yeah, count me in. And September 14th, is that the date that you mentioned, Lisa, that might be available for a work session?
That is council's regularly scheduled work session that is available.
Would that work for you, Roger?
Absolutely, that'd be, that would be wonderful. And I'll make sure, I'll make sure Amy's schedule is clear so she can. But Michelle's comment that that would be a big, a big part of the training is to make our businesses where so that they do, so they can work there. And, and that's one of the things you'll see if you go to Mesa, a lot of the hotels and have adapted their, their processes to help and encourage people with cognitive issues to work there.
Thank you. Okay, I guess we will talk about that more as we get close to that date then. Next item on the agenda is Chris Salas is going to present something about enterprise fleet management. Chris?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of council. We have John Bell tonight to present on the Enterprise Lease Program. It is a comprehensive fleet management system. Before everyone jumps to judgment, I just want to know, when I first met Mr. Bell, I explained to him why I was not in favor of the program, but I was told to look into it. And Mr. Bell accepted my answer and took on the challenge of explaining to me all the benefits. I've been definitely a very challenging person for Mr. Bell. And I want to say that finance participated, fleet participated, public works participated, and administrative staff have been involved in the process. It's been a great opportunity for me to learn and understand and they provided very clear analytics as far as how the system works. So with that, I'm going to introduce Mr. John Bell with Enterprise.
Thank you very much, Christopher. Vice Mayor Anderson, council members, thank you very much for having me on this evening. I'm going to, at this time, share my screen. Before I do that, a little bit about myself, I'm a native Arizonan. I've been with Enterprise for 12 years now. And I'm looking forward to discussing our program and presenting it this evening. Thank you very much for having me.
All right, is everyone able to see my screen?
Yes, I am. Ken?
Yes.
All right, and you see the, the vehicles with the fleet management sign?
Yes.
Perfect. The first thing I always like to start with is the Enterprise story. Back in 1957, Jack Taylor started Enterprise in St. Louis, Missouri, after returning from World War II. He was in the Navy and he flew off of two ships, the USS Essex and the USS Enterprise. And when he went to decide to name the, name for his company, he obviously chose the, the, one of the ships he flew off of. From that humble beginning in a basement of a Cadillac dealership in St. Louis, Missouri, we're still a family-owned company. We are still based out of St. Louis, Missouri. Chrissy Taylor is the granddaughter of Jack, is now our senior. We're in the third generation of family ownership. Today, globally, Enterprise operates over 2 million vehicles in over 10,000 locations. We buy and we sell around a million vehicles a year. Enterprise Management, the fleet management division that partners with both companies and government municipalities, has about 50 locations throughout the country. We're managing over 500,000 vehicles right now. Here in Arizona, our team consists of about 20 team members. About four months ago, like Chris mentioned, he did reach out to me and we started the conversation. Chris was able, Chris and his team were able to provide me with fleet list, maintenance costs, fuel costs, and kind of the budget that they've been working with with the last couple of years. From the information that they were able to give me, we were able to look at the current fleet situation. 81% of the fleet in the current light duty fleet, not including police, so the public works, the roads, the parks department, those vehicles, 81% are 10 years or older. When looking at that fleet, the average age right now is about 15 years old. And looking at the current pace of how you guys have been purchasing vehicles and cycling out of them, it would take 26 years, it takes 26 years to cycle out of vehicles with the current plan. What we know is that older vehicles have higher fuel costs, higher maintenance costs, and reduced productivity due to increased downtime, and they also have less safety features. What we were tasked to do was to find an effective life cycle that can maximize the potential equity of the fleet you have right now and create savings. And the data, the analysis that I'm going to show on the next slide shows that in a 10-year period with the enterprise partnership, the town of Florence will be able to save $434,000. The way we're going to do this is we're going to shorten that life cycle from over 25 years and 195,000 miles to on average, three years or around 25,000 miles. We're going to streamline the resale process for the future leased vehicles to maximize the return of equity, which is about 12% above average right now, and increase that speed of sale to about 10 to 20 days. With the shortened life cycle, we're going to see an 83% reduction of maintenance costs by looking at the vehicles and then by remaining underneath the factory warranty for almost the entire life of the vehicle with the town of Florence. And we're going to continually reduce that overall fuel spend by finding the most fuel-efficient vehicles in their class for the use of the vehicle. Also, we're going to have better safety features with the newer vehicles. 14 of the vehicles right now predate the anti-lock brake standardization of 2007. And 23 of your vehicles predate the electronic stability control standardization of 2012. And electronic stability control, according to the IIHS, is the most significant safety invention since the seatbelt. So here is the analysis that I mentioned that I've reviewed with staff. And to go over it quickly, with the fleet you have now of 26 vehicles in the current life cycle of 26 years, the maintenance numbers gathered from the data that you guys have kept over the last 12 months was $200 per vehicle per month, or about 30 cents per mile. Right now, your vehicles are going just under 8,000 miles. And the current miles per gallon projection is 10 miles per gallon based on the age of the fleet and the type of vehicles that you are running. We, with the partnership, would reduce the fleet to 25. There's one vehicle that we found that was underutilized. And we would go from running vehicles every 26 years to cycling out of them just over three years old. The maintenance costs would go down all the way from 200 per month per vehicle to 34 per month per vehicle. And again, the overall miles per gallon in the fleet would increase with the newer vehicles. The first yellow line you see here is your current fleet budget. You can see on average, you're purchasing about one vehicle for about $24,000. You're spending about $62,000 on maintenance and just under $40,000 on fuel. Your annual fleet budget with the current plan is about $126,000. By moving into a leasing program and moving from purchasing, the annual budget you'll see will decrease. So as you can see here, in the first year, if we were to replace 21 vehicles with leased vehicles, we would see a lease payment of $100,000. We would see $60,000 of equity returned to the town by selling the vehicles that you currently have. We would also sell some of the vehicles that we leased this year within the first 12 months as that is the best equity position currently. The maintenance spend of you, of the town right now would go all the way down from $62,000 all the way down to $18,000. The fuel spend would go from 40 to 30. And the overall fleet budget would go from 126 down to $95,000, saving you $30,000. As you can see, each year, we add more leased vehicles until the leased fleet stays consistent with a consistent lease payment. And with the selling of the leased vehicles through the enterprise channel, you'd be able to see a sustainable savings, a yearly annual savings of $40,000. And overall, in that first 10 years, a savings of $434,000. We're able to get these savings due to the infrastructure that we've created, that we use to sell our rental vehicles, and by putting the leased vehicles for the town of Florence into that same system. On this slide, you can see the three main components that go into the cost of running a vehicle. These costs and these components are something that we look at daily and that we will give to you on the meetings that we have throughout the year. When looking at this, we want to always try and find a time before the maintenance line spikes up. We always try and avoid major repairs, like a transmission or an engine. We also want to avoid the fuel efficiency getting worse over time. Currently, the town of Florence is beyond that number, that optimal time. As again, you're seeing the average age of the vehicles you have is 15 years old. I want to leave you again just with the safety feature. So along with saving the hundreds of thousands of dollars, the vehicles that the folks in the town will be driving are all the latest vehicles with all the standard safety features. They'll all have the anti-lock brakes and the airbag testing. They'll all have the electronic stability control as those things are now standard. Also, on anything smaller than a half-ton truck, they'll have a rear camera standard, which is another great safety feature. So along with the savings that we mentioned earlier, the fleet will be much safer, allowing the employees of the town to drive a safer vehicle and allowing the town to, again, stretch the dollars of the taxpayers further. That's the presentation that I have for you today. I want to again thank you for your time. And I want to thank staff for working with me for the last four months to be able to give you this information and to go over that. And if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of those at this time.
I have a question, Mr. Bell. You look like a bubble. About every three years, $146,000, why is that bubble?
Go back a couple of steps.
Yeah.
And on this graph, sir?
Yes. The fleet budget there, $146,661.
Right there. Okay, yes. So as you can see, that year, we're selling back fewer vehicles. Though of the fleet, the 26 vehicles you have, every class, whether it be a three-quarter ton truck, a one-ton truck, a small truck, we look at that and write, and we decide with the data we have, when is the best time to sell that vehicle back? You'll notice in that section, that negative number, so the value that we're getting for selling vehicles back is only 21,000. That's a year where we're not selling very many vehicles back.
So how long will it take us to replace all our vehicles we have now? Is that immediate or is that spread out over a couple of years?
On the plan that you're seeing right here, that would be done in the first two years. We would lease 21 vehicles the first year, the second year we'd lease five. It sounds though that based on current budgets, that might need to go a little, maybe a year extra or two. I mean, again, that is something that we're flexible on to help out the town as operationally possible.
Councilman Anderson, to address that question, we have obviously a CIP that we've budgeted. And we have a series of police vehicles set to be replaced. If my memory serves me correctly, that is three police vehicles at 63,000 apiece. We have one fleet maintenance vehicle to be replaced, I believe it's 34,000. We have one community services vehicle to be replaced, right in the same area of about 34,000. And then we have a wastewater vehicle. And so Mr. Bell's been given that information and is proposing a series of vehicles that could be leased for that same price essentially in the first year. And we would be able to get more for our actual expenditure under that first limit. But the one thing that everyone has to understand is our budget was already set while we were still doing the research for this program. So this isn't to blame anyone or Mr. Bell would be, would love to lease as many vehicles as possible. But the reality is we have a budget today. As we move into our budget cycle in December, we could bolster that depending on, again, council direction, understanding there's a long-term benefit, we could lease more vehicles in the second year. So it wouldn't necessarily have to go two, three, four, or five years. It's really on the council's pleasure on how they see how aggressive they want to be. The numbers that were evaluated in that table though were strictly public works trucks at the time. We didn't look at the entire town at the time. This project kind of started off and has gained momentum. But when we first started off, we were just looking at public works. And now we've amended that, we're still in the process of analyzing all the data. But we're obviously probably most inclined to replace more police vehicles. Those are the vehicles that seem to be most costly to operate based on the mileage, the use, the style of vehicle that we had in the past. So again, we could probably, I can't remember if I, again, I'm just shooting off the hip here, but if I remember right, I think me and Mr. Bell looked at eight police cars versus three. And I'm sure the police department would appreciate having eight versus three, all within the same cost. So we also have the ability to move faster with the lease program. But I wouldn't say that's my biggest concern. My biggest concern is the long-term. Obviously, 10 years down the road, if we save 400,000, and that's on just public works, again, all the data's not there, but let's just assume we save 6, 7, 800,000 when we fold in all of the police department. So again, we want to start off with a simple presentation, make sure that we weren't coming to the council with an essentially a item that was ready to be voted on. One thing that has been definitely criticized in the past is not giving council enough information in advance and just showing up with, here, please approve this. We're taking time to kind of make sure that everyone has time to digest this. And then if there's any future questions, they can be written. And then in the future, come back, maybe in September, with an actual action item.
Councilman, Councilmember Cortez?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So when you talk about replacing our fleet, it's rather as public works or fire department or police department, they have specialized equipment that has to be installed on them. So I see that you're saying we'll save all this money based on purchasing the vehicle. But if you sell that vehicle every year to two years, a vehicle that we would normally keep for 10 years or however long, how are we absorbing the cost of having to take all that equipment off of this police car and now put it on a new police car? And it just seems like a lot of extra stuff to me. So do these cars come equipped for what our police officers and fire department are going to need? And when we sell it, like what happens to all that equipment? Are we having to pay for multiple equipment every time we got a new car? If you could tell me that, please.
Absolutely, great question. With the police vehicles specifically, and the partnerships that we have right now, the vehicles come fully outfitted. We work with the current vendors that you're using to get those vehicles outfitted. By shortening the life cycle, we actually can save money on the outfit equipment. When keeping a vehicle for longer, you're not able to use those same parts because the vehicle's body style has changed. By working with those vendors and talking with the city, we're actually able to predict when that body change is going to happen because the manufacturers give us extra time to let us know. And then we can use at times more than 50% of the equipment that's in there. And so what we would do in that instance is we would take the vehicle that you already have outfit, get another one on order. When that one shows up, bring the other vehicle back. That same vendor that we use would switch it out for you. And then the new one would show up and we would sell the old one. So you're asking, there's a lot of logistics. And right now, we've got the 30-plus government partners that we're working with. And most of them, the police department is part of it, and we help with that logistically.
So it would switch like all the mounts that are inside the vehicle for their computers and their radios and all that would automatically be moved over to the new vehicle?
So the vendors that you're probably currently using right now, yes, would work with that. I don't do it, I don't know every part. But they look at that and everything they can reuse, absolutely, they reuse it. And it actually, again, we see cost savings, one, because you have a better vehicle to sell. And then two, because you get to reuse a larger percentage of that equipment. And at times, that's $20,000 plus, so absolutely, that's a large portion of it.
Vice Mayor Anderson, I just want you to know there was hands raised in the background. The first hand raised was Councilmember Wall, second hand raised was Kristen Larson. You would also notice if you have the chats on, there's several questions that are being asked in the chat box. I'd like to just say the town of Florence has Southwest Risk as our insurance and vehicles are bid with a bid process. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Okay, who was first? Karen?
Councilmember Karen Wall, and Councilmember Kristen Larson, and then Councilmember Judy Hughes. I saw her also wave her hand, so I believe she would like to also speak.
That's all that one.
I wasn't sure I was doing it correctly with the raising the hand. I think actually with Michelle's questions, some of mine were answered. We went through a fairly large project not too long ago of installing GPS equipment on all of our vehicles. And I would wonder whether or not that equipment would be directly transferable over to any new vehicles that we included in this project.
Councilwoman Wall, yes, the equipment that we use, installation is as simple as plugging it in from the OBD-2 port to their OBD-2 port and then essentially taking a zip tie around it. It's essentially as simple as that. As well as Enterprise actually uses the same system, I believe, or they have an equivalent system. But we've talked softly on how that that will be integrated. But in theory, we could have zero loss on that part of it there.
Good, okay.
My last question was, how many total vehicles, not counting our fire engines, how many total vehicles does the town have in its fleet?
The ones that were in this was the 26, and I want to say there's at least that many of the police vehicles as well.
I believe, I believe we're in the low 50s, Councilwoman Wall.
Okay, thank you.
Hey. That it, Councilman Wall?
That's all I have.
Okay, Councilmember Larson?
Actually, Karen asked my question. I was going to ask about the GPS systems that were recently purchased, so I'm glad we got that covered.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hughes?
Yeah, Chris, what does that do to the personnel that take care of fleet maintenance? If we go to, if we go out on leasing?
Very astute. We've been talking about that for a while. We've been talking about that since looking at the lease. That's an ongoing conversation that, quite frankly, I think is an appropriate time to have it right here and right now. I understand that the council's been, always been very supportive of staff and has always been very careful to eliminate positions. In a future budget year, we have a plan to add a dedicated wastewater maintenance employee. The plan is to take one of these mechanics and move them over to that so there won't be necessarily any jobs lost in this. But I think it's extremely fair to say and very simple that there is no way we'll be able to carry the same amount of mechanics when we're essentially changing oil. We are going to still need a certain amount of mechanics to do the work on public works because a lot of our vehicles are not changing the oil. We still have motor graders to replace hydraulic rams. We still have blade edges to replace. So there's still a lot of work that is not changing the oil. I don't want to make it sound like that's everything. But I hope that everything on a police vehicle will almost turn into essentially doing oil change and just inspections where when we do the oil change, we'll pull the wheels, we'll check the brakes, we'll check the control arms, we'll check the, all of the important things that hopefully keep police officers safe and the traveling public safe from those vehicles if one were to, again, have an issue. So we're going to continue to do that kind of stuff, inspections. But we are going to have to transition away from the amount of mechanics we have today to a more slim workforce in the future. Absolutely, sir.
So that answered your question. Councilmember Hughes?
Well, I wanted, I wanted to know how many people it would eliminate to go into the leasing program.
Well, currently, we have three mechanics. And the way that we're evaluating, we'd still need two mechanics because we still need two mechanics. because we still need to be, we still need to have the ability when a police car comes in and we have a public works vehicle torn apart. We've got to still be able to work on that vehicle. We've got to be able to serve vacation and sick time. So we're going to need two mechanics, but there's not going to be a need for a third mechanic when we have, I mean, uh again, this was supposed to be a rather short uh presentation, but there's been hours and hours and hours spent with Mr. Bell going over the absolute details, the minutia. And um it it was very apparent very early on, based on just the, if you divide those dollars of maintenance into service hours, that we're going to have a reduction in the workforce as it relates to just me here.
Let me ask, let me ask one final question, uh Chris. Uh, we have got grants from the federal government and from the Indian tribes to buy vehicles. What do we do about those grants? Do we still apply those grants? Can we use that money for something else?
Um, quite honestly, I have not evaluated that that has not come up. Um, that is going to have to be something that I will have to meet with Lisa and her employee, um Jennifer Evans and discuss um how that can be applied, if it can be applied. Obviously, on the current cycle where we have probably a a timeframe tied to a vehicle, those are not going to be removed and get penalized to have to pay the grant back. But in the interim, uh we would probably use those vehicles and then see how this is applied to those vehicles. And maybe if the grant is advantageous enough, but not able to be using the lease program, uh we would continue to purchase vehicles one way or another and still be able to probably work with enterprise on that. Um, one thing I want to point out is that Mr. Bell, I think one of his customers again is the city of Phoenix. So I can only assume that they've evaluated every scenario. We just haven't looked at some things like that. So I'll will um speak to Mr. Bell about those options if he has any experience and again, Ms. Evans on those.
Okay, anything else and any other council member?
I I had a couple more questions, Vice Mayor. I didn't know if you noticed, there were two questions from uh the general public that is in attendance at this meeting. Uh, one is, are we self-insured for our vehicles? And uh secondly, why can't Florence shop local at Garrett for the vehicles?
Councilmember Wall, um I did try to respond to that earlier. Um, we do, we are insured with Southwest Risk. Um, that is both our building, our uh our risk liability as well as our vehicles. So we are not self-insured. And um any vehicle that we're going to purchase goes through an actual bid process. Chris would do a public forks and Chris would do a specification list for what kind of vehicle the town is looking at. And they actually have to put it out for bid. And then you get to see our bid sheet that shows every person that um submits a bid. And then it comes to council typically with a recommendation from staff. That's under me, the Arizona State Statute bid process. Go ahead, Chris, Mr. Salas.
Um, I know that we want to move on, but there's an important point. And again, Mr. Bell had an incredibly difficult presentation, was supposed to be kept to ten minutes. And so one of the things that was kind of left off, I hate to say it and is going to be incredibly important and speak to this question, Ms. Wall and speak to the whole group. Uh, one of the things that I didn't understand initially was the idea that the general public, if they buy, I'm going to give just a very generic example, a Ford F- one fifty, they're buying that vehicle for thirty-seven thousand dollars approximately. The town through the state contract and through enterprise is buying that same vehicle for about twenty-four thousand five hundred. So there's the thirteen thousand dollars in equity immediately. After those two years, our price point after the depreciation is almost the same as what we paid for that vehicle. And that is how the enterprise system works is because of their network, we could do the same thing, but we don't have the ability to offload the vehicles through their million-plus sales that they do a year through different states. They will take our vehicle, get the value that we're almost paying for them approximately again. And this is very generic, this isn't considering the outfitting, this isn't considering the utility bids, this is a generic question. I mean, generic answers are a explorer that's being used by the administrative staff, the explorer used by IT. So with that, that buying power from the state contract and the ability for the selling power that enterprise has is what makes this entire system work. We would not be able to do this without enterprise. We don't have the ability to sell the vehicle. We can buy the vehicle, but then we're again, we're using all of that cash and not using the leasing program. That is the, that is the disadvantage. And again, we want to have a more extensive conversation about this tonight, um you know, a separate work session. Um, but this was a first attempt to inform the council of what the future plan is of staff to bring this for the um act.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you, Mr. Bell.
Thank you for having me.
Moving on then, I guess the next presentation is also from you, Chris, from the Florence Transportation Study.
Once again, um thank you, council, for having us tonight. We have presented once before on the town's transportation study. This is um our second presentation. We took all of public comment, staff um comments. So um our engineering staff, our town manager and others made comments to consult and then we had it available um online at the library or the community service center so that people could read this and provide a public input. And with this, we are just going to present the final outcomes of our study. With this, Mr. Kevin Kugler from Michael Baker.
Thanks, Chris, and good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Uh, Trenton, are you going to run the PowerPoint or should I be sharing my screen?
Uh, Kevin, please go ahead and share your screen if you would. Good evening, council members. Uh, you might remember me, as Chris said, uh Kevin Kugler and the transportation planning director with uh Michael Baker International. And it's a pleasure to be back in front of you to recap the process uh of helping develop your transportation planning study or master plan, if you will, over the past oh several months. And uh culminated at the end of February and back to recap and seek your approval to this evening, or at least your consideration. And I just wanted to recap uh the process, as Chris pointed out, uh the status of the project and where we've been. Uh, the, as you can see on the screen before you, there was a series of thirteen different tasks uh that began with developing the work plan. We had a technical advisory committee overseeing the process. We've had a couple of council briefings along the way, the preparation of a couple of technical working papers and working closely with uh your town manager and Mr. Salas in particular and uh and Mr. Bitter as well along the way, getting their input, members uh from your uh various experts in the community on the trans- the notion of transportation, uh representative from carts and so on and so forth. Uh, we had a couple of public meetings along the way uh to get input both on the initial draft documentation and then the the final documentation uh that ultimately culminated in a final uh final report. Uh, you might recall the this slide from the past uh that the, it was very clear uh right from the get-go, some of the uh needs and transportation issues that that Florence had. It was to improve the the roadway connectivity uh east to west in town, i.e. a lack of east-west connections today. Um, looking at what's called functional classifications of the roadway, basically the role of a roadway and how it serves and moves traffic in the community. Uh, roadway cross-sections, we developed new roadway cross-sections, modernize them for you. Of course, there are no plan, um transportation is uh is incomplete with, is complete without safety considerations. We're of course looked at. Uh, we had uh non-vehicular considerations, bike and pedestrian mobility. In particular, looking at how to better connect uh Merrill Ranch, Five Parks area and uh in the downtown or old the town Florence area. Uh, and then in addition, there was a a series of regulations that the technical advisory committee had requested of us to provide uh things like site triangle, uh bus bay examples uh and develop a series for truck routes as well as look at some policies to provide for connection between subdivision.
Next question. Back back up the one there.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Uh, the intersection there at uh was it seventy-nine and Hunt Highway?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we've been talking about getting that traffic light in there for two, three years. And we were told by ADOT that that was going to be part of the bridge replacement. And now we've we've heard made out that the bridge replacement is going to be moved out another two years. So how do we get that traffic light uh in the plan and get it, get ADOT to to pay their part and to upgrade that intersection?
Uh, Vice Mayor or Chris, if I may, uh, yes, it is still going to be, it's still a recommendation of this report. So there's nothing about the ADOT's recent process of reevaluating their tip based on uh modifications on COVID revenues. I I I would probably defer to Mr. Salas to speak to specifics in that process. I haven't heard of that lately, but I do know that ADOT has had to modify the programming and budgeting of their tip based on revised revenue projections on a statewide basis. Um, so I'm going to assume that's what that is the deferral on the project. Uh, Chris can correct me if I'm wrong, but I can tell you with respect to the plan and recommendations that we're providing, uh that that is still a recommendation of this plan.
Yes, uh Vice Mayor Anderson, I'm going to need to look in to see what the previous tip was and then where it's been changed to. I know that we are working extremely fast on the bridge project. So I I honestly wasn't aware of necessarily a delay in the construction dates. I hadn't really heard that. So I need to look into that and uh get your response in writing. I'll talk, try to talk to the project manager and get you something by Wednesday as to figure out um where that is and speak to key ADOT personnel and then seeing where we could fit in the um signal project as the design gets further. Maybe we still don't have to wait for the bridge, but again, we need to see where that, that's the reason why we're waiting, Kevin, is that that distance there, how far that the transition is going to be, have to be as part of that project, it's still not a hundred percent clear. So we're still, we're still in the design part of that.
Yeah, well, if we can just put in a temporary light or something until the bridge project gets going.
Why can't ADOT do that?
I'm sorry?
Was the question, why can't ADOT do that?
And I said, why can't we just put in a temporary light until we get the permanent lighting? You know, my understanding is that they want to widen the road there, they want to put in some turn lanes and you know, um that's all will be part of that bridge process because the the whole highway can be widened, I understand. And uh but we could go ahead and put in a a temporary, just uh three-way light there until all that gets done. So, but anyway, please, go ahead, uh Kevin.
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, so as part of the process of any transportation master plan that we do with Florence or any other community, we certainly evaluated your existing average daily traffic and roadway level of service. Uh, we looked at the uh and one of the points upfront was your existing transportation plan. As Chris aptly pointed out to council before, it was done in two thousand eight in in a different time, in a different era where the the pace of development and the activity in Florence and across central Arizona was was very rapid. And so the programming of the roadways at that time was commensurate with the different PUDs that you had uh on paper and the zoning processes that we're going through. Well, flash forward to post uh post-Great Recession, uh Florence, like many other communities, of course, the 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 scenario of development and the pace of development has changed. And that's true for Florence as well. So this plan really became an opportunity to reevaluate your uh development agreement obligations. Uh, look at which what PUDs were indeed moving forward in earnest and what maybe are some that have maybe fallen by the wayside and really take an opportunity to right-size your roadways, simply put. And so that's, that's really what this plan was all about in in many respects was the um the right sizing of some of your roadways, coming up with the roadway classifications in in the process to do so. So we've um, you are part of the the Maricopa Association Government's regional uh transportation planning, uh IGA and activities associated with them. So we coordinated with MAG on the regional travel demand model uh for this process to determine those future uh vehicle trips and how that's going to impact uh roadways and sizing of roadways in Florence. Uh, we have, we applied twenty forty growth projections to the twenty fifteen roadway network. Uh, in in the evaluation with Maricopa Association of Governments, we determined an average annual growth rate of four percent, uh which is a progressive growth rate, uh but that's good for for roadway planning like this. You want to be somewhat conservative, but not overly conservative. Uh, the next slide here, this map is showing the existing average daily uh traffic on the roads today. Uh, in theory at least, yesterday really in uh in Florence. And as you can see, uh the the purple, blue and green lines really reflect a small volume of traffic. Uh, the orange and darker red lines represent heavier uh volumes of traffic upwards of over twenty thousand cars a day. And what what will not surprise you about this slide is that the heaviest of volumes are typically found on Hunt Highway um outside i- in the Santan Valley area, which is in part your, the Florence planning area. Uh, but with respect to the current uh sixty or so square miles of municipal limits, the the primary roadways, the ADOT facilities uh in Hunt Highway are uh no surprise to you, uh your busiest roadways in the community. What we did, as I mentioned in the, one of the previous slides in the bullet point, is we, what we did is we took that four percent growth per year for a sunset projection of this plan out to the year two thousand forty. And we, and this map is saying, okay, if we didn't do anything to the roadways, that if we look, if the roadways in as they are today were the same in two thousand forty, that's called the no build level of service, what would that level of service look like on our roadways? How much more crowded would they be? And you can see in the slide that the yellows and the reds are are failing or close to failing level of service on the roadways. And so again, you can start to see more roadways. Um, certainly Hunt Highway coming south of Santan area as it leads to Merrill Ranch becomes even more congested. Uh, Addaway Road becomes more congested, seventy-nine north of downtown, Old Town become congested. And and generally, the roadways have less capacity. So we take that analysis and then I mentioned uh right sizing the roadway. And this is the map that reflects that, what's called the functional classification, which the functional classification really defines the role of the roadway and the types of vehicle movements that that roadway serves. So you can see in the legend here that I'll call them some of your main roadways, your most recognizable ones, the Hunt Highway uh set in the in the ADOT facilities, Highway seventy-nine and two eighty-seven are identified as your largest roads um in the darker blue. And then in the lighter blue, which you can kind of see in the Merrill Ranch area and a lot of supporting roads are identified as minor arterials and so on and so forth. So one thing that we did, Vice Mayor and council, is I'll use that term again, unfortunately, is right sizing the roadway. There there were several roadways that became right-sized and in some cases downsized, which over the course of between now and two thousand forty, as you're planning your capital improvements, that right sizing of roadway is going to save you considerable money because you're not going to have a surplus of unnecessary roads or roadway capacity, I should say. What we were also tasked with doing by uh your town manager and Mr. Salas was identifying uh then determining a truck routing plan uh which this might look pretty simple and straightforward and uh and it is in a sense that the uh the intent here is to look at roadways that serve agri- that serve truck traffic, of course, for agriculture, commercial and industrial uses, both now and the and the potential to do so in the future with a really strong eye at looking at preserving or enhancing uh or facilitating really the mission of the Florence Military Reservation. So you'll see that the ADOT Highway facilities, Arizona Farms Road, Hunt Highway and Addaway Road in particular are identified as uh regional uh designated as truck routes, which does a couple of things technically and for grants and a few other things, ensuring that pavement sections can support heavier uh truck loads, weight, vehicle weights. I mentioned we have through the right sizing of the roadways, the the corresponding effect of that is developing roadway cross-sections. Uh, again, working closely uh with Mr. Salas and your staff. You come up with a, we think a pretty slick graphic that Chris and Larry and others in the, in the community development world, when they're dealing with incoming developers can show them with one graphic here. This is what our This is what our expectation is for a roadway, in this case a minor arterial. In terms of its right of way, the, the, the width of the different facilities, i.e. the lanes and the bike lane and the sidewalks. And then at the bottom, you'll see that for the casual user, they can see a quick glance of what the right of way would be, what the posted and the, the design speed is of the roadway and a general sense of how much that road costs per mile to develop. And how much traffic that, that type of roadway can, can accommodate. We of course came up with a series of recommended roadway improvements. A series of 12 different specific roadway improvements in terms of riding the roadways. I, I mentioned that some roadways were, were downsized or reduced. Well, there was also some that were increased or proposed to be increased in size to be able to accommodate that 2040 level of, of traffic. And I, I don't know if I need to go through all these, it's just that I wanted to highlight that there's 12 there. That most commonly we go from two lanes to four lanes and in, in some cases like Hunt Highway, a southern section, two lanes to six lanes, so on and so forth. From a safety perspective, we also had a series of recommended intersections to improve safety wise. And really this is a good value bank for the buck, so to speak. These are some low hanging fruit type of low, low investment opportunities that can really assist on enhancing the safety of these nine different intersections that were identified by both the technical study, observations of the community and staff and the technical advisory committee. Also an important contribution to the overall transportation study is the bike and pedestrian facilities. This map at first blush here probably looks like a giant bowl of spaghetti and there's a lot going on in this map. In the body of the report, we have this map broken down into three segments. So you can digest it in three components. And those components are on-street bicycle facilities, on-street pedestrian facilities, and then off-street bicycle and pedestrian facilities. That those recommendations came from your active transportation master plan that was also being done in a similar timeframe of this. The, the additional recommendations that were, that's, that the technical advisor committee and staff are requesting were such as this graphic represents here is the concept of a site visibility triangle at a corner. You know, when you pull up in your car and you can't see past the neighbor's hedges or whatnot. Staff will now have some, some policies to consider and help enforce with respect to site visibility and safety at intersections. We have developed and provided both the Maricopa Association of Government bus, pull-out bus-based specifications for on-street facilities, where to locate them and how to right-size them. And as well as on ADOT Highway Facilities and we speak to their standards and their permit processes. We have some policies and recommendations on something called adaptive streets, which is a concept of really some a low investment aesthetic and some operational improvements on rights of ways that might, might feel a little bit oversized in some of the, particularly some of the Old Town areas. Where with the original plats of the, the streets and the properties that have some, some large right of ways. And then we also have some policies to connect existing and planned neighborhoods as well. Baked into the, into the overall master plan. So you recall, we've seen, we've visited with you council on a couple of different occasions. We culminated the process with our second public meeting and on January 21st. That was in the council chamber's foyer, just right before a presentation I provided to you that same evening. We had a series of transportation boards that looks pretty similar to a lot of the slides that we represented here. In terms of the proposed facilities, the roadway cross-sections and the safety improvements. Some of the comments that we received back from the group. Attendees were happy to see the intersection improvements in particular, safety is always a, a top community consideration. Which, which is great to see. Participants also expect excitement in the Gila River additional crossing of the, of the river. Community was pleased to see more opportunities for citizens to walk and bike safely. That, that was a common thread throughout the process. And then we did hear a lot of comments about the roundabout that's currently being designed and to be constructed at 79 and 287 as well. So that was, that was captured at the onset of the process as well. So I know there's a lot there. I didn't want to overdo it to overstep my welcome, but I'm myself or Mr. Salas are glad to take any questions you have, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome.
Does anyone have any questions for Kevin or Chris? Council members? I guess not. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Okay, the next presentation is going to be from Chief Strayer and it's about our CERT vehicle presentation.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of council. As you recall, as soon as you make clear the screen here, I'll put, put mine up here. There we go. Hopefully you can hear me okay. As you recall, a couple of years ago, we started a community emergency response team. And in conjunction with Penal County and their Office of Emergency Management. And Vice Mayor, I know you were one of the founding members of that team. It has been an extremely successful program. They've done a multiple deployments to wildland fires, structure fires, training, drills. And then town events. So we look for that program to continue to expand. And as, and as the community as it grows. Along those lines, one of the most recent things that occurred about a year ago, we were able to acquire a trailer that is equipped with a variety of tools and supplies necessary to respond very, various kinds of emergency floods and, and things like that. And one of the problems we ran into is we did not have a, a vehicle that could pull, that could pull this trailer. So, um, working with Penal County, they were able to identify for not just us, but all three teams were kind of encountering the same problem. They were able to acquire some grant money from the state. Leftover grant money from FEMA and then Penal County also kicking some money where 75% of the cost of this new vehicle was covered where the town can only need to donate about $8,600. So we, on June 15th of this year, the council approved the accepting this vehicle. And really the purpose of this short presentation tonight is just to let you know we have it. It's in service. It's been, we wanted to show you a couple of pictures of it here. And you can see that it's the right size equipment. Our town fleet manager, David Hills, worked with us closely to make sure we spec the truck that could easily pull this trailer. So you can see a picture of it there along with Bruce Odegaard, the leader of the CERT team and then Barb Elliott from Penal County, Mary, and myself. So normally we would bring this over and park it in front of the council and let you see all of it. Hopefully we can get back to those days soon again, but for now, I hope, hope the pictures will, will be, will suffice for what we're trying to do. So again, it's, it's, it's a ride. Here's some pictures of it with the stickers on it. So you can see it's identified for both passing grant or Florence Fire and also Florence CERT. So with that, I really, that really covers what I needed to, to talk about and I'd be happy to answer any questions. I did want to point out that this is not just for Florence CERT. It's primarily a CERT vehicle and a tent holder trailer, but it is a town of Florence vehicle. The title was transferred when we paid our, our share of this to the town of Florence. So we'll use it for shuttling equipment, for training and a lot of different things beyond that, beyond the CERT. But it's primarily, again, the CERT response vehicle. Again, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Oh, where do you store those vehicles? This will be at Station 1?
This is going to the trailer and the truck are both going to be moved to Station 2 and parked in the third bay when, when AMR moves to the hospital. It's going to occupy the bay that AMR is at now and they'll be together so they can deploy quickly if they're, they're called upon to do that. That's our plan at this point.
Thank you. Uh, council, anyone have question? If not, thank you, Chief Strayer.
You're welcome.
Okay, where are we now? To the last drunk buster cart presentation. Chief Wall. I was hoping you were going to ride that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor, council members, good evening. On July 27th, the police department received our drunk buster go-kart. Received the go-kart from a government highway safety grant at a cost of a little over $1,800. I'll show you a couple of slides of the cart here in just a few moments. We use the cart to promote the dangers of drunk driving to our youth. Youth drivers will operate the cart on a designated course using goggles that will simulate the effects of drug and alcohol impairment. Cart will be used at our youth citizens academy, a high school and our community events. And questions from the council that they have?
Council questions? I guess I would hope you'd let us know when you have those training sessions. It might be interesting for people to attend and, and observe those.
Yes, sir. We absolutely will. And Vice Mayor, don't be surprised if we don't put you on it.
Thank you. Hey, thank, thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
If nothing else, we will go on to the consent agenda. The, all items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of our consent agenda, unless council members or other members of the public object at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is authorization to, to contract with Waxy sanitation supply for the operational janitorial supply and related custodian equipment and services in the amount not to exceed $40,000 through June the 30th, 2021. That date was corrected by the town clerk clerk. Item B is approval of the GIS enterprise license agreement renewal for three years with Environmental Systems Research Institute in the amount not to exceed $89,827.50. Item C is the approval of the May 26th special meeting, the July 6th regular meeting, the July 20th special meeting and the July 20th regular meeting minutes. That is our consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or want to pull any of those items? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Here we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose likewise. Motion passes. Item 8A is unfinished business. It's the second, it's the ordinance for 697-20, the second reading and discussion approval or disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Arizona, amending section 150 dot 300. The technical codes of the town of Florence code of ordinances by amending the 2012 international fire code. Barbara?
Good evening, Vice Mayor Anderson, Honorable Counsel Mayor Walter. It's a privilege to be back for this second reading of ordinance 697-20, which was presented to you June 15th. Basically the ordinance is amending some of our local fire code amendments that were made around a year ago, a little over a year ago. The proposed amendments are keeping with best practices for most communities for life and fire safety protection of occupants, firefighters as well as business owners. And they're a less restrictive, mostly they're dealing with sprinkler thresholds, making some corrections or some amendments to, to help make sure that we're looking at economic development balanced with life safety and still meeting best practice needs. So that is what is before you tonight. Some of the occupancies we are touching on have to deal with restaurants, storage occupancies, auto repair facilities, tire storage, those types of things.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Well, this is a quiet group tonight. Yes. Councilman Coquard has?
So are we addressing, I went through it, but I didn't see, and I could have missed it. Are we addressing also like a thrift store? Type of business, thrift store or any type of mercantile? That's the, that's the word I'm looking for, mercantile.
We, we are not. The mercantile amendments that were passed when we adopted the 2012 code last year are pretty consistent with what we need from an operations standpoint. What I discovered after I came to work here were the occupancies we're looking at now were extremely restrictive. And we wanted to look at keeping those, addressing those, making those more in line. So one of our occupancy types right now, like the storage occupancy, just to give you kind of an example of what that amendment does is the, we have a business that has applied for a 314 square foot storage building on their commercial property. And the way our amendments read right now, that that building would have to be sprinkled. So we want to amend that section for this particular S occupancy to put it more in line with what our needs are. Typically, most of our buildings are, the sprinkler threshold is 5,000 square foot, which has to do with what we can best to do operationally to control a fire as well as perhaps even suppress it and limit its spread to other buildings.
Does that 5,000 square foot include mercantile?
It does. That's a current, that's in our current code.
Okay. And I only ask that because I guess for me, um, codes are very confusing and they're up to interpretation. So I know when we went through and we were going to approve the new codes, I will admit that I had limited understanding of them. And it's not until after we pass it that people start to point out to us some things that we may have missed and probably should have covered. So I hope that in this presentation and future presentations, it's dumbed down a little bit so that I know myself and the public understand what we're doing because I don't want to have to go back again and say, oh, we shouldn't have been so restrictive that now we're preventing people from doing business. Because as you know, I am probably one of the biggest proponents out there for our business owners and wanting to make sure we make it easy for them to do business while, as Chief Strayer would say, still making sure that we can, you know, preserve life and safety for residents and our buildings. But I'm glad that we're making some adjustments to help these businesses out. I hope that we continue this trend.
Thank you. Any, any other questions? Okay, I will entertain a motion at this point.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number 697-20.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I only heard one aye. All opposed? Likewise. Okay, I guess the motion passes. The next item is new business. I gotta get over to new business. Our new business is resolution number 1747-20. It's discussion approval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona declaring and the adoption of the results of the primary election on August 4th, 2020. Lisa Garcia?
Just making sure you can see my screen.
Yeah, we got your screen.
Primary election was held on August 4th, 2020. As of the end of voter registration period, 7,043 people were registered to vote in Florence. The number of cast ballot for the August 4th, 2020 primary election was 3,100. The number of cast ballot for the August 4th, 2020 primary election was 3,138. Our voter turnout was 44.45%. Of that, 83.56% of the people voted by mail ballot and 16.44% voted at the polls. Votes received underneath the race of mayor, Kyle Larson received 1,054 votes. Gary Ponzo received 541 votes. Tara Walter received 1,417 votes. For the race of council, Johnny, or John Johnson received 729 votes. Kristen Larson received 1,538 votes. Johnny Mendoza received 977 votes. Gary Mittendorf received 823 votes. Arthur Snake Neal received 1,120 votes. Jeff Reel received 557 votes. Bill Tanner received 1,017 votes. And Valerie Woolridge received 940 votes. After the results of the election have been declared by Pinal County, the clerk's office does go in and determine if anyone is elected. The way that people are reelected is that they receive 50% of the votes and it's rounded up. For the race of mayor, there's only one seat, so we divided 3,012 votes in half. And that number that needed to be received was 1,506 in order to be elected. For the council race, there was 7,701 votes, and that would be divided by the three seats. And that would be 2,567. Of that, we take half, we round up, and the number to needed to receive to be elected would be 1,284 votes. So tonight, we are issuing a certificate of election to Kristen Larson, who received 1,538 votes. And certificate of nominations for the general election that will be held on November 3rd, 2020 for mayoral candidates are Tara Walters, who received 1,417 votes, and Kyle Larson, who received 1,054 votes. For council candidates for the November 3rd, 2020 general election, Arthur Snake Neal was issued a certificate of nomination for his receiving 1,120 votes. Bill Tanner received a certificate of nomination for receiving 1,017 votes. And Johnny Menosa was issued a certificate of nomination for receiving 977 votes. And finally, Valerie Woolridge was also issued a certificate of nomination for receiving 940 votes. I did want to point out a couple of changes that happened with our precincts. If you went on to the Pinal County page and you were following, you did note that there were seven precincts that were listed in the Town of Florence results. So if you look at Cactus Forest, the pink in precinct number 25, can you see my mouse moving on the screen?
Yes.
This would be precinct number 25, this little area on the edge of town. As people move into that area, you will see more people voting. Up here on the purple, that would be Superior West or precinct number 51. We did have one vote registered for precinct number 51. The yellow up here towards the top, this is Copper Basin. It's the very outskirts to the north. And this little red line is actually Blackwater. So Blackwater is actually a road, it's actually Adaway Road in the Town of Florence. So while no one will ever live on the road, you will still see that showing as a precinct within the Town of Florence city limits. I did also want to go over statistics. These are the statistics from 2002 to 2020. As you can see, over the years, our voter registration has significantly increased. We want to keep that trend going up. We believe that every, every person should be registered and every vote should be cast. And so right now, we do have 7,043 voters in the Town of Florence. And here's our percentage of voter turnout. You can see how we have the slightly shades of pink. These would be the mayoral elections. So if you look at how many people voted in the last general election, that would be the general election of 2016, you would see that we did have a 79.28% voter turnout. We do believe that our turnout for the general election will be similar. As you can see, for the primary 2016, we had a 41.32% voter turnout. And we did just slightly decrease with a 41.23% voter turnout. Important dates to come. Tonight, we're canvassing the election. Council will do that by adopting the resolution that is attached. That's resolution number 1747-20, adopting the results of the 2020 primary election. On September 18th, the Town of Florence will have on its website the sample ballot. After tonight, we'll also be updating our website. And all candidates, except for those removing, moving on to the general election, will be, and all of the new dates will be added to the website. On September 24th, 2020, write-in paperwork is due for any council candidate or mayor candidate considered, wanting to consider being a write-in. October 2nd, post sample ballots will be posted in all locations. October 5th, voter registration closes. So our 7,000 number could jump up again by that time. On October 7th, we're gonna, that's when the early ballots will go out into the mail. October 23rd, that's the last day you can ask for a mail ballot election or a mail ballot to vote in the election. On November 3rd, that's Election Day. November 23rd, that's the last day to canvas the votes. And December 7th is the day that we have tentatively set for the swearing-in ceremony for the new candidates. And with that, Mayor and Council, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. That is your, your election being canvassed.
Do you want to have any questions? I, I have a question about Copper Basin.
Yes, sir.
Is that part of the town now, some people in Copper Basin vote in town election?
Now, that Copper Basin, that is just the voting dis precinct in Copper Basin. So that's not actually the subdivision that's called Copper Basin. So if you look out and you look at our solar plant that's located within the Town of Florence city limits, that is considered Copper Basin voter precinct.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Hey, Lisa?
Yes.
I would like to know for the November election, have we worked out with the county where the location will be for Anthem? Because the fire station was not a good location. The parking in the dirt is not, in my opinion, a great place to have our residents trying to park the incline from that dirt lot, which I don't think we should be using as a parking lot. The incline was very difficult for anybody who had a disability or, you know, we had people that had a boot on or anything like that. So I would just like to make sure that we find a better location for the November election, if we can, please.
Yes. A couple of weeks prior to the election, Pinal County did contact us. Their typical, their regular polling place, which was the Anthem Community Center, was not accessible to be used. The Town of Florence did make arrangements and did allow for Pinal County to come and view it. I do want to thank both the Fire Department and the Public Works Department, who did a great job, who did a great job at getting that site ready. I, I agree, we contacted Pinal County and we said that we did not think that that was an acceptable site due to the amount of work that was required to prep it to get the second entrance as well as the dirt parking lot, as well as it not being large enough to have a number of people be able to go in and still distance themselves. So Pinal County currently is working on a alternate polling place. And I'll keep everybody posted as soon as I know, and they will be contacting, and they will be changing their map and getting it up as soon as they have a contract in place.
And so who paid for the prepping of that dirt lot and the things that were done to make it so cars could drive in and out of it? Who paid for that?
The Town of Florence spent 1,600, and I believe $43 on, and that's off the top of my head, the numbers might be slightly off, in order to prep that site. And it was a lot of dirt moved and things that happened. And it was the public works guys who are, who work in the right-of-way, the HERF guys, who were working outside of the right-of-way. The Town of Florence has submitted that bill over to Pinal County.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure we get reimbursed because if we, they would have found a better location, we wouldn't have had to have probably spent that money.
Yeah, they're, and they're looking at other locations for the, and hopefully we'll find something that's suitable. Real key is, we do want Florence voters voting in the Town of Florence, and we would like something within the Anthem area as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No hands up? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 1747-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? Motion's passed. I think that's our last agenda item. We go into the manager's report, and I'm told that there is no manager's report tonight.
I just wanted to make comment that if anyone has any comments that they want the Town of Florence to receive for CARES funding, the Town of Florence does have a work session that is on August 31st. You can submit those either to Ben Bitter or to Roger and with the Chamber of Commerce or any member of your council, and they will forward those to staff. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, the last call to public. Do we have any public that's wanting to speak? Have we covered all the chat? Questions, screens?
We're looking right now, sorry, sir. We're looking right now to see if any hands go up. So far, I do not see any hands going up for call to the public.
Hey, I think Mayor Walter is on our side. Mayor Walter? Yeah. At least your lights are on. Okay, I guess with that being called to the public, now the call to council, current events only. Council member Hughes?
Well, I would like to, I'm encouraged that the COVID numbers are getting better in Florence. And so I would like to ask staff when the possibility of us getting back into town hall for our council meeting.
Mayor, members of council, I'll talk to the COVID committee and we will get a report back to council.
Thank you.
Hey, Councilmember Cortez?
Sorry, I always giggle because nobody ever says my last name correctly. I always giggle.
How do you say it?
Cortez.
Cortez, okay. You speak faster. I always speak slower.
Oh, okay. So as always, I just want to remind everybody, check in on your neighbors and do wellness checks, mental health is very important to us. I am the liaison to the school district, so there have been some challenges with the school district going back to school. As we stated at our last meeting, they're holding off until at least October 5th before they start school. And I personally think that was a very wise decision of our school board and their superintendent to understand that they weren't ready for the kids in full force to be on campus. They did open up on Monday a technology type thing. So if your kids don't have technology or they need extra assistance, they can attend. And so you need to contact the district to get that set up, and they have them doing social distancing. The district also is offering, and I'm going to apologize, I have to look down so that I can read it. They wanted to take a moment to remind everyone of some very valuable online resources currently available. Every month, the district is partnered with Child Crisis Arizona to offer different workshops here towards parents and caregivers. This month, they have started a parent support group that is open to all parents, grandparents, caregivers, and et cetera. The support group meetings will happen every other week. This information is posted on the community at Facebook page, also on the FUSD district website under the Parent Hub link. I did ask Lisa Garcia if she could include that information on the town's websites as well. The one that is coming up, it looks like this first one, the topic to include at-home activities for kids, parenting strategies, managing stress, loving logic, parenting wisely, mindfulness, and active parenting. So some really great free tools that are being offered by the district to help everyone kind of navigate this different time that we're in. So I encourage everybody to utilize these. And, you know, hopefully if we can show them that it is a need, it'll be something that even after COVID is lifted, that maybe we'll be able to continue to offer parents and caregivers and grandparents in our community, because I think mental health is a very important thing, and we need to surround our community with love and make sure that everyone is being supported. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Wall?
Thank you. I'd like to definitely encourage members of our business community to submit ideas and suggestions for what would be most helpful for them to continue to operate their businesses through the pandemic. Suggestions for spending the, whatever balance may remain of the CARES Act funding could be submitted to Roger Beatty with the chamber or to Lisa Garcia, our deputy town manager. Those will be the things that we are discussing at the work session on the 31st. So it's very important that we hear from you, so please let us know. We want to make sure that your business remains healthy through this. Certainly also, the chamber is working with the town and with our, with Jennifer Evans regarding a grant that is available for marketing for businesses in the town. They should be working with the local first organization to put together a package of marketing materials that hopefully will also benefit members of our business community. So those are two important things. We want to make sure that our businesses remain healthy, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Larson?
I, a lot of the things that I was going to talk about already were sort of covered, so I really do hope that people would give their feedback regarding the CARES funding. Really want to hear what our business community has to say as well as our citizens. So certainly let us know, there's various different means they already sort of mentioned to communicate with us and be happy to be receptive to that feedback. I also wanted to ask staff, there was a tutor program that was put out, and I know a lot of students are going back to school or just have recently gone back to school. And there, I've heard a lot from parents that are really struggling with how to navigate the online systems. And I know Michelle's already touched, based on what the school district's doing, but I know that we had also had a tutor program. Lisa, do you know where that's at or, or, Azekiah, do you know anything about that as far as where, when that's going to be taking off or if we have people register?
Councilwoman, this is Azekiah. So we are working on it at the library. Right now, we're in the process of gathering volunteers to help work as tutors. So we will keep you updated.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to make sure we have something in place. I know that a lot of parents are really struggling with, with their students right now. And definitely, like Michelle has also said, you know, check on your neighbor, have parental support. I know a lot of some people are talking about doing microschools and having different ways where they're helping neighbors. And so I want to remind everyone to continue to look out for each other in both social aspects as well as tangibles. So I really want to make sure that we're coming together as a community, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Walter? Are you able to talk?
I am able to talk, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
I just wanted to first say thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor Anderson, for facilitating the meeting this evening. It was run very smooth. And I did not want to miss a meeting because that is not something that I like to ever do. I had something that came up, so I wanted to just communicate that. I want to thank everybody who turned out to vote this past primary election. You know, we have a lot of great things that are happening. You know, we have a lot of great things that are happening in our town, and I'm very pleased with the presentations that were presented this evening, and I'm looking forward to our work session next Monday, where we'll continue and hopefully finalize the CARES funding and thus vote a plan the first week of September.
Mayor, just one correction. We will not meet next Monday. Next Monday is the twenty-fourth of August, but we will meet on the thirty-first. Thank you for that correction. It has been a very long day without my calendar in front of me, too.
Anything else, anybody? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Okay, a motion and second to adjourn. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Opposed likewise? The meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everybody for being here tonight, and one of all the participants that were here on Zoom. Thank you for participating, and all the people that are watching on our TV channel, thank you. And uh, please participate in these meetings. It's important. Get your input. Thank you.